Almost there.
Almost. Okay.
Almost there.
Almost there. We want to welcome everybody to our Hyde Park City Council meeting for November 12th. The opening thought or prayer and pledge will be led by Councilmember Osborne. So we'll turn it to Gerald, okay?
I will offer a word of prayer. Our dear, kind heavenly Father, as we gather this evening, we give thanks to thee for our many blessings. And we pray heavenly Father for our city and those that oversee it. And pray that good decisions be made in the benefit of the citizens of Hyde Park and for the future. And we're thankful for this country we have to live in and to have the freedoms and stuff that we enjoy. And we pray for thy blessings to be upon our meeting this night. And that we might have good discussion and make good decisions. This we pray for in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
If you'll please rise and follow me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under one law, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gerald. The next item is to review and accept the meeting minutes from October 22. Kurt, do you have any comments?
No, no changes.
I'd ask about this really long motion that Councilmember Fowles made, but I'm sure that it was accurate. So I don't have any comments.
When you have to take a breath a couple of times in your motion?
Yeah, it was probably a couple of times.
Okay.
I'm good, my everything.
So I look for a motion to approve the meeting minutes from October 22nd.
Snow moved.
A motion from Kirk is your second.
I will second.
Second from Gerald, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed with nay? Next item is to approve the current agenda. I have no amendments to the agenda. If council doesn't, we'd look to approve the agenda as written.
All motion that we approve the agenda as written?
The motion from Tiffany?
All seconded.
Your second from Stephanie. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with nay? Motion carries five zero. Did you understand? The next item is to open it up. For resident input, questions or comments to myself or the council. Please limit to three minutes of any item that is not on the agenda. We may not be able to respond because we may not have all the answers at this time, but we will get back to you on it. So we will open it up at this time. Please come forward to the microphone.
You know, I have a request. And that being that the city Public Works boys become better stewards of the leaves. Instead of just blowing them out in this urban gutter in this street to gather them up like the rest of us. I get enough of them as it is. I don't need the cities too. And I do get them when the wind comes from the northwest. I'm here on behalf of me and my wife because she's usually the one that blows them.
All right, thank you, thing. You could take that back to Public Works. Okay. Any other comments? Having none, we'll close that portion and we'll move on to the council business. Marcus, do you have anything to report?
Apologies to the city council. I was late in getting the staff report into the box, but it is in there now. Things are slowing down a little bit, not by much, but my staff report went from three pages to just over one. So things are winding down. A lot is still happening. We're going to talk about a couple of the most important items a little later tonight. So I'll save the discussion until we get to those. But if you have any questions about any of those items, I am open to them.
Part of this group list, and if you change the spacing, you can get on one.
Yes.
Okay, council, do you have anything? Tiffany, I'd like to hear about your support.
So our front porch activity was held on the 6th of November. We had a pretty good turnout. About 25 people came. We had two presentations, one from USU Extension on how to cook with mushrooms and one from Ryan Jacobson about how to grow mushrooms at home and how to use them in your kitchen and your compost. And people were really interested and it was well attended and they all went home with a growing kit to grow mushrooms and took a survey, got a lot of feedback. It was a positive thing. People stayed till after 1 o'clock. Our activity went from 10 to noon, but they lingered and visited and it'll be a good thing.
When's the next one?
February is when our next plan is and then we'll go from there. We might try and do it monthly if possible, if we get enough volunteers.
Okay, great. Gerald, do you have anything?
Um, no.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Opening's successful.
Yes, Spook Alley was great. The youth council met today and we talked about our hometown Christmas festival. They've got some great plans. It is on December 1st at 7 o'clock. And Santa, the real Santa is going to be coming, so we're lucky to have him come. And yeah, encourage everyone and try to get the word out to all our residents. So we have a big showing.
Dave?
Yeah, Gerald and I met with the city safety committee last week. We'd received quite a list of things that Marcus had provided to us that residents have concerns about. Some of the same, same old kind of thing, speeding. We talked about more flashing speed signs. It seemed to work pretty well. We had a pretty good conversation. At our last city council meeting, we had some concerns about visibility problems on 450 North and 700 East. We asked chief to go take a look. He did. We discussed that, in fact, yeah, he agrees there's some safety concerns there. And at this point, we've got some recommendations, but we're also put together with the mayor's efforts. I mean, normally we call it a SOP, a standard operating procedures, but procedures for the...
I think that's what I called it.
I think you did. That's why I can't think of what we should... Anyway, a policy, I guess, policy on membership and how would that really works. And so we want to present that in its full, several pages for the city council to look at. And we'll discuss at our next meeting. And with that, we'll make some official recommendations on how we address some of the concerns that have come up. So we won't go into detail tonight on that, but at our next meeting, we'll discuss more of that.
Okay. All right. I know Marcus and I are working on a list of city codes that we want to have approved to... And I'm going to document it. And there's things that we've spoke about here in the city council, water, water things. So as we get this compiled, I want to send that to the city council for concurrence. And then from your concurrence, send it on as a letter coming from not only myself, but from the city council. That here is, you know, some high priority codes that need to be updated. The other thing, we were officially approved from Cache County Council, who approves all of the card grant recommendations. We applied for it and received 3,825,000 for the continuation of Wolf Pathway. And as you know, we've been working on the engineering and property portion of that now. So that's in motion. And I hope everybody can understand me because I've been a little under the weather. So please forgive me on that. Let's see, on November 18th, we have a meeting, what time, Donia?
5:30.
5:30. As a city council and it's an open meeting, but that is solely to... Well, these are things Donia should be talking about. Go ahead.
Yeah, November 18th at 5:30, we're going to have a really quick city council meeting to certify the election results. They will have them to me by the 15th, so we'll be able to do that. And every city in the county is supposed to be doing that on the same night is why that's a strange, strange night. And then do you want me to?
Yeah.
No, city council on November 26th and December 24th, as usual, will enjoy the holidays and then get to play catch up in January, so.
First item is...
Mayor, did we, we can just get a report from chief on it?
Oh, sorry, can't, chief.
That's okay. No problem. I was happy to wait. Do whatever. So I have a couple of things I wanted to just kind of update the council on. It's been a few meetings since I've been able to be here with you. So I appreciate your patience with me on that. Wanted to talk first for a second about the electric motorcycle update. That has been a huge problem for everybody in the valley across the state. With my position on the Utah Chiefs of Police Board of Directors, we brought that up to the Legislative Working Group. And I wanted to update as far as what has come out of it so far. There hasn't been a draft legislation yet that I've seen, but there's two items that they want to focus on. The first is a training. They're looking at having the Division of Natural Resources provide that training since they already have a training for off highway vehicles. They're talking about amending that and updating that to include electric motorcycles. There's also talk about having a series of questions on the driver's license exam that people would have to answer on that. The second part of it deals with the enforcement on how to have a realistic enforcement with the kids on that. They're talking about having a tiered approach, a warning. The second one was a citation with an impound and then the third, something to do with perhaps affecting a future license that the kids would get when they turn 16. So that is all in the works. It's still, they're still trying to figure that out on how that's going to happen. But every chief, every executive officer across the state is having the same issues we are here. And that, that seems to be the consensus of what they want to focus on with that. One more thing with that, they are looking at a, are watching a bill that's being ran in Florida right now that would make it illegal for anybody under 16 to operate an electric motorcycle. So they're looking at that and the repercussions that might come from that. They're not talking about implementing that, but they, they are curious because that has come up in the discussions with that. As far as the department update, right now we're down to one. So we've been able to hire a few. Some of you know, one of the guys that we've hired, Spencer Danes. We've picked up another one from the county, another one from Morgan County Sheriff's Office that's coming over. And we have a few applications that we're still going through. So like I said, we are almost to that fully staffed point, which is a good feeling on that. The next update is our shop with a cough event. This one is a big one and we've been able to have some partnerships developed that we weren't planning on, which is going to be a really good thing for us. So last week we had some meetings with Logan Regional Hospital. And they were asking about updates that were, or things that were happening. And we mentioned that and they asked if they could partner with us and help provide that. And so they offered to provide the breakfast for the officers and the kids involved on that as well. Provide a gift for them, a stocking with some hygiene kit and some games and things like that. I asked if we could maybe use their helipad in the event that Santa wants to be flown in and delivered there. Anyway, it's an exciting thing because it's always been down at the sheriff's office before. They've been really good to help us with that. And this partnership with IHC is going to be a really good thing for it. So we have limited it to 40 kids. It'll be December 6th. And the kids are coming for breakfast at 8 o'clock in the morning. They'll have the breakfast. We'll go out and we'll see Santa arrive. And then the kids will go procession style down 1400 North now into Walmart on the backside where they will shop like normal, check out. And then we have need for several different volunteer positions on this one. So we're trying to find volunteers. One of them was gift wrapping, like, like what we had you help with last year. We are also trying to get enough volunteers to send a volunteer with each officer and kid in an effort to help them stay in the budget that they need to stay in. Sometimes the kids will come up with, you know, a $300 and we have a $250 budget. And it's hard to turn the kids down on that. And so the department has been covering that and some kids come under and so it kind of averages out. But we're hoping if we can have a little more accurate count as they're going, that that will help ease that. After the gift wrapping, we're going to have the kids go down to the garden center where Santa will be this year instead of up front. Last year there was a lot of traffic with people shopping that were trying to get out and it was just jumbled. And so we're trying to make improvements. We're also going to have a check in and check out with the parents. We've had meetings already with the family place and the kids have been selected. And so it's turning into be a really good event, but we ask for your help again. If you're able to come, it would be, it would be fantastic.
What time do you need volunteers?
Well, really we need volunteers to be there closer to the 9:05, 9 o'clock mark. If you want to see the procession arrive. On that, and that's just at the North Logan Walmart.
And in the garden center is where we should meet.
Just, just up front. So the kids will come in up front still and then they're paired up by that point. And they'll go with, with the officers to do the shopping, but we'll have the gift wrapping stations already done. If we have volunteers, we could have them go with, with an officer and so forth. So it'll be kind of a dynamic.
The gift wrapping stations will be like last year?
Yep, like last year, Walmart's providing all the tape, scissors and paper and tables.
And they'll be up at the front?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
After they're processed through, then they go?
Then they go down to the garden center. They'll have a chance to take a picture with Santa and the parents are, are being asked to pick up their children in the garden center instead of up front.
So if the procession gets there at 9 o'clock, I don't suppose they will start wrapping presents right away?
Probably not. My guess, you'll probably start seeing kids 9:20, 9:30 maybe.
Okay.
That are coming up to the front with that.
Okay, I've got my youth council that is planning on doing that.
Fantastic. I brought flyers too that we can, I can give you at the end of it, the information on it. And then the last thing with calls for service, it's been a busy, well, busy week, but a busy month really. But that's a pretty high priority, the stabbing that you read about in the paper. That one took the entire department to handle that, along with SBI and the Cache County Attorney's Office. It was a domestic violence situation that turned ugly on that, but we were able to get there. I want to talk for a second about the response time on that. So we, this has come up before about priority response time and how quick our officers are getting there. They say a priority one, which is a life event on there should be under a three minute response. Our officers on this event, from the time they were called to the time that they were on scene helping was a minute and 42 seconds. Our officers were out again, which I was glad to see. That's something that we've encouraged them to do, to be out and about because of stuff like this. And they happened to be right in the area and were there. They changed what could have gone worse to catching him kind of in the act. And he had to change his tune a little bit to what was happening. And he tried to pretend to be the good guy in that, but that's not what we found. So kudos to the, for the guys for being out. I really appreciated that on that. This last week for priority one calls, we had 15 accidents that our officers handled, 21 medicals, one rape, one sex offense and one automobile theft and one forgery and one DUI on that. So these were all high priority, long events that they investigated and, and put to work for a total of 116 calls total. So like I said, it was a busy week, but we're, we're trying to do good stuff.
So I, I met with the chief after some of these calls and the one he mentioned, all hands on deck. And it went on for extended hours and there's a lot of work to be done now behind the scenes. So it was, it, it took North Park completely, but we appreciate that. And it was unfortunate event that happened. And glad that the police responded as quickly as they did. Could have, things could be worse.
Could have been a lot worse. Thank you, mayor.
The next item is a public hearing and consider resolution 2025-14, a resolution amending the Hyde Park city fee schedule to modify the solid waste removal fees. And that's from Waste Management. There is a, a federal number, we spoke about this, I believe in our last city council member. And this is what's coming up of it. And if you look at your file, they have updated those.
Mayor, we can cover this if you would like to.
Yeah, if you would pull that up. I'm still trying to pull that file up again.
Yes, the first part of this document is just what it currently is. And then I've just taken it and the red part is what it will be. It is just what Waste Management is charging us. Plus for each garbage can, not the second garbage can, but the initial garbage can, there is a $1.50 administrative fee to pay for the utility clerk, part of the utility clerk. That was already included in the other fee, but we felt like it needed to become more transparent. And so that's just been removed. I mean, it's still included in that fee. It just shows an asterisk showing that that $1.50 is added to each of those. But this is exactly what Waste Management is charging us. We're just passing it on to the resident.
With that information, let's open up the public hearing for this, for the fee structure schedule. We'll open up this time. Come forward, please, and state your name and concern. Having none, we'll close the public hearing portion and move on to council discussion and potential approval, council.
So I, we have had some discussion, just so people know that. And so if we don't make this change, then it would have to come out of another place in our budget, which I don't think we have another place to take it from, so.
So we're saying that Waste Management is going to charge the new rates? Whether or not it gets approved and what, either we pass it on to the end user, the residents, or the city pay for it, we have to do, it's going to happen, is that my understanding?
Yeah, we, so we've been renegotiating the contract. It's a new mod through the contract and the fee is governed. That, that portion that is increased is governed or the fed. So it originally was supposed to happen in October. We told them, yeah, we have to have public hearings and notices and things like that. So it will, it will happen.
I think I send a... I guess I'm just surprised that the federal government dictates what Waste Management fees are. And I need to understand that.
So the federal government puts out something called the CPI or the Consumer Price Index. And that's the number they use. It's federally recognized source to track pricing and inflation. And so in the contract that was signed by the Cash Waste Consortium, which Hyde Park is a part of, it allowed for Waste Management to do an increase every year based on the numbers in the CPI. And not really surprised to anyone that has gone up consistently the past few years. Therefore Waste Management has also increased their pricing a little bit every few years. And you're absolutely right, the city could decide to not increase this fee, but then it comes out of our budget somewhere else. And we don't have another spot in the budget where we have planned for those funds to come out of. And so the city has decided to increase the fee.
So we will be doing this again every year then?
It's happened every year. And I've told them every year to not do it October 1st, give us time because we have to have the public hearing, so.
So it wouldn't make any difference if we were with a different, if we were in the consortium or... Well, I guess it would be a different contract. We could be a contract with somebody else who would not tie an annual rate increase to the CPI.
All, all the major waste collectors are tied to the same rate.
Kind of their mode of business, how they, how they structure their contracts.
Right, I was, I sat in on some of the committee meetings where they reviewed a lot of the contracts from different providers. When the Waste Consortium was looking for somebody to take over after Logan dumped us, no pun intended, I guess. But every single contract that they saw was the same-ish. If it wasn't based on the CPI, there was a number, another number or federal index or some price point that each contract said, based on this, we want a guaranteed ability to increase every year. So this was Waste Management, the best or the worst contract? I don't remember, but it's the one that the consortium thought was the best option at the time. And since we're part of the consortium, we just kind of have to do whatever they have signed us up for. And that's, that's not the thing that it's a bad thing. The consortium is made up of representation from all the communities who are a part of it. And so we do have a say, we did have a say when they signed the contract. So it's not like we're just saying, well, whatever you want to sign us up for. We, there was a lot of input when this contract was signed.
All the municipalities tied into the Cash Waste Consortium reviewed this and they're all implementing the same, the same index change. How do we notify our patrons or, you know, our public?
It'll go out in the newsletter and on the utility billing, just like anytime we have a fee increase, a utility one, it goes out in the newsletter and on the utility bill.
And we notify them of public hearings, which not many people, unless they specifically have a dog in a fight, they're not going to go there and read it.
I just appreciate, Donia, your effort for transparency and including that administrative fee. I just think that's good practice on behalf of our city and I appreciate you looking out for us that way.
I didn't notice that one, but yes, I agree. Council, any more discussion?
I didn't know they did a price difference between the 60 gallon and the 90.
Not much though, huh?
Not much, not much.
Did really have all the same standard.
I didn't know they did a price difference between the sixty gallon and the ninety.
Not much though, huh?
Not much, not much.
Did really have all the same standard barrels.
I thought that was a charging the same for both.
Any more questions, comments, counsel? If not, I look for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept resolution twenty twenty five dash sixteen, the fee schedule update for solid waste removal.
And I'll second it.
Got a motion from Cefi, a second from Tiffany to accept resolution twenty twenty five dash fourteen, adjusting the Hyde Park City fee schedule. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed with nay? Motion carries five zero. The next item is to consider a code enforcement issue. Marcus, you want to give us a little update on this?
Yeah, so I believe the individual is here tonight to speak more to the issue if the council wants to hear from them. So the city reached out to Mr. Chris Carr, who lives at sixty north, three hundred east.
City code enforcement.
The city code, well, the code enforcement officer who works for North Park Police and therefore represents the city. The letter that was sent wasn't a notice of violation. It was just a letter saying, we think there may be something on your property that may be in violation of the city code. As far as I understand, the code enforcement officer had a conversation with Mr. Carr about the issue, and they had discussed options on how to fix it. Mr. Carr visited the city office and talked to several employees about the vehicle. But the city hasn't issued any violation notices. There are no fines being issued at this point. And so the city council really is the appeal body for any code enforcement issues. And so at this time, the city hasn't taken any official action. The code enforcement officer just sent a heads up to the resident saying that they think there could be a problem. So city staff, it's our opinion that there's nothing for the city council to vote on tonight because there's nothing necessarily that's being appealed. And so you can't act as the appeal body. But if you want to speak with the resident about the issue more, that's definitely your prerogative.
I have that. Chris, do you want to speak? Sure, come on up.
Well, first I want to thank all of you for what you guys do. The streets and everything and pipes and subdivisions and everything. I mean, there's an awful lot going on. You guys have to be involved in all that. So I really appreciate what you guys do. It's gotta be a lot of work. It's gotta be. Anyway, we're here to talk about my bus. It was running up until about five years ago. I used to take it to my family reunion each year. That's about all I drove it every year for about the last fifteen, but I still drove it and went to that. Now, about five years ago, when I backed it up to go to the family reunion, I lost reverse, first gear and sixth. So all I did was drive it back up into the spot of the city. Last year, because the transmission was in trouble, I, last year I pulled the transmission and was already planning to fix everything. And I took it to a shop in Brigham City, and they, they screwed me actually. The transmission still does not work. In fact, it's locked between two gears. But I've already started a search for another one a few weeks ago. And there's some, there are some answers out there. Now, if I cannot find another one, I'd rather put in a different one, but if I can't, I can always pull that one out and have it rebuilt so that I'm still mobile again. Otherwise, the bus was running. About twenty years ago, I don't know exactly how long ago it was, but we basically had the same or similar problem. I had my bus parked up there and John Talassan, the policeman, he came and spoke to me about it for the city, I'm pretty sure, that I needed to put a building over top of my bus. So working with Bert, the building inspector, I did come up and buy a, buy a building and did put it up. But they didn't like the building, so the city had me take it back down. After that, there was no more correspondence of any kind for the last twenty years. I was already planning to fix up the bus before this even came up. So we're kind of headed in the same direction, really. The bus looks like an eyesore right now because I haven't done anything for the last few years. I was pretty frustrated with the fact that the transmission didn't work. And so I kind of just dropped things, but I did start up on it again this year, so as soon as I can get a transmission, I'll put it in and move it, but I want to turn it around. I intend to fix the windows, the bodywork around the back that's rusted out and whatever. I intend to replace all of that as well. So, and keep it operating. Now, the only real problem is registration. All these years I've had my bus insured, it's still insured right now. But registration was a real problem. When I first came, I came from Canada, so we ran into a couple of log jams. We're trying to get it registered, but biggest thing at the time was it was gonna cost me two hundred and fifty dollars just for the registration, and I had to have an inspection every year, and which was another two hundred and fifty dollars. And twenty five years ago, that was quite a lot of money. And.
I'm sure it's gone down since then.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure it's doubled. I didn't actually check, but I'm sure it's doubled. But the reason that is the case is because it was originally a commercial vehicle. It's, it's not been used as a commercial vehicle ever since I came here. And the insurance company was even concerned about that. So we have that all worked out. I've not any problem with that. But the registration, and not only the red tape was difficult, it just cost me an awful lot of money. I had a family at the time, and it's every year. It's not just once in a while. So I did not register the bus. I drove it once a year after my family reunion, my lab, and I was stopped once. And I paid a forty dollar fine for no registration. I really don't want to register it right now. I'm happy to get it operating and everything and look decent instead of like it looks. But the registration would probably cost me a thousand dollars a year, and it's, that's a difficult thing to do for a vehicle like this. Whereas I don't really drive it. What I'm really asking for is if you guys could make an exception on registration. I guess it's called a variance, but if you guys could just allow me to keep it there without registering it, I promise in return that I will make it look decent. It will be kept operating and all of that, so.
So they're, they're really, as Marcus said, there's nothing for us. I think the code enforcement officer, Mr., I butcher his last name.
Bull Spiler. Bull Spiler.
That's the one. It was just a letter of notice. There's no citation.
I know.
There's nothing there. So if, if he took it to that portion of, of some sort of code, city code violation, those others on the registration, that's, that's a state thing. That's nothing. We can't do anything on that, but we're if, if it goes to the next step of giving you a notice, then, then the city can look at what we can do. But at this time, there's, there's nothing for us to rule on other than we have a copy of the letter that.
Right.
Doesn't.
And now we have the background on it.
Now we have backgrounds, so.
They're also suggested that, exactly what I'm doing right now. He thought this.
Yeah, so, and that's good.
And I'm really trying to cooperate, you know. I really want to make everybody happy, actually, so.
So let's just have it move forward, just as you said.
Just keep working at it.
Keep working at it, and let's get that going forward, so.
Okay, and I'm to keep him informed of, like tonight as well, so I will do that. I'd very much appreciate it.
Thank you, Chris. The next item is to consider ordinance twenty twenty five dash two three R Z, an ordinance amending the zoning map for property located at two sixty one East Center from R two to R four. This would be if you, I doubt some people know, but it's just a property over the canal. Otherwise known as Camille's place.
So Mayor, just as a background for the city council, this was heard by the Planning Commission last week. They had a public hearing on it. As far as I understand, the public hearing was uneventful. There wasn't much comment. I do believe we have the applicant on via Zoom if there are specific questions for them.
You got the applicant in the back of the room.
The, oh, the other applicant is on Zoom. As far as city staff is concerned, this project meets with the general plan, as you can see in the rezon ordinance in your packet. It meets with the city's plan for the area, and there's no immediate issues with granting the rezon. And so there is a sample motion if you feel so inclined within the ordinance itself. I believe there is anyway.
So this is before you, counsel. It's, public hearing was held at Planning Commission. And so this comes to you for this rezon. You have questions, comments? Camille's here.
So this here will create two additional building lots, so, right?
As far as we know, there's still a little bit of work to be done before they are legitimate building lots. I believe they talked about wanting to do a bit of a subdivision process after the rezon and switch up these boundary lines. A parcel to the north, you'd have a tough time fitting a house on there with the R four zone standards. And so I believe the applicant's intent is to modify their parcel lines and divide those up so that it's a better building lot.
So this may or may not be the way things eventually end up on the.
We're just, we're just voting on whether to change it from R two to R four.
Yeah, the biggest thing is I, I would say we want to make sure, and I think Camille's aware of it, that we have identified where all of the utilities are, whenever they're putting in the boundary lines, when they go to the next step, so.
Yep, and if they decide to submit for, you know, a subdivision or a site plan or something, that will all be identified at that point.
Yep. So counsel, it's to you what motion to approve, disapprove.
I'll make a motion that we approve the rezon twenty twenty five, twenty three R Z.
And I second that motion.
Got a motion from Gerald and a second from Tiffany to approve ordinance number twenty twenty five dash two three R Z. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed with nay? There you go, Camille. I guess we could actually come up and do your victory lap or whatever. Our next item is consider landscape being option from Ringhurst subdivision. You have the PowerPoint and I'd ask them to come up and let's have that presentation.
I've heard of you. I don't know if you guys are like me. I like to just have them in my hand too, so if you want them, it's awesome that I like to have it.
Thank you.
So yeah, what we're proposing is, I mean, you guys have seen, probably seen this project for a while now, so you're pretty familiar with it. Just some, some background on us. So we're, we're just the residential piece. It's three different pieces. It's the residential, mixed use and commercial. And me and my partner Kurt, we are just the residential, so the townhouse piece of ours. That's our, our portion of it. So kind of what we're proposing, well, what we're proposing right now is that we, we change the landscaping plan more to like a zero scape plan, more water efficient plan, so that we can use city water for the, the open spaces until pressurized irrigation is to our site. We will stub the site for irrigation water, and then once that gets to us, then they can just connect right in and switch it over to irrigation water on that. Marcus, if you want to go, is the next. And I ripped on your guys' packet, I ripped these out because I feel like it was kind of redundant, so I apologize there. But yeah, you kind of see, the closest pressurized line we, that we have found talking with Hyde Park Irrigation and Cache High Line is about twenty one ninety three feet away, give or take a little bit on that. So that's where we feel that it is not in the service, serviceable district as far as the infrastructure goes for that. That's why we're asking just to have the variance for the culinary water until pressurized irrigation gets there. And then, and yeah, so there's kind of a, an image where I have, the research that I have done has shown me where the closest pressurized irrigation line to us is on that. And if you guys have any questions at any time, please stop me and ask any questions you may have. So and then if you want to keep going, unless you guys have any questions on that.
When is it gonna be done? Or I mean, you say you're kind of, that's an open-ended question saying, well, we want to do this, but we'll hook up when it comes. I mean, when is it gonna come?
Talking with Sunrise and a little bit with Marcus, they're, they're thinking maybe five to ten years, and correct me if I'm wrong, Marcus, is kind of the plan?
Well, it could be this is a private irrigation line. So from what we understand and discussing with Hyde Park Canal Company, their plan is to do a system-wide pressurization project, but they're not going to start probably for another five-ish years.
Yeah.
But yeah, that's, that's based on the last numbers that we heard from them. This isn't a city-driven project.
And the, the line, go back one slide, the one that comes down from the middle canal, I would think the person that farmed that property, right or wrong, he ran that into the Hyde Park City, the Hyde Park Canal District water from the middle canal. So he was taking water from a different canal that wasn't allowed. But I wonder if it's been there long enough, and I think Marcus brought this up, whether or not you can search prescriptive use.
Yep, I did. And the, the, the pipeline is not actually on our property. It is up, up, I think it's three hundred up that North and South Road, a little bit to the east of our property. I went out and rode around with John Mickel the other day, and he kind of showed me where all his gates were, all the pipes, and where the nearest pressurized connections were for it. Yeah, because I was, I loved what Marcus said that in our meeting, but yeah, unfortunately, it is not close enough to our pipe. He is running those roller lines to connect into where he can just kind of irrigate our parcel. Is what he's been doing the past fifteen or twenty years. So yeah, that's a, I know they have some private lines, but he's, he doesn't want us connecting in to those on the, some of the private lines that aren't, that aren't on the, the GIS or anything like that. So that's why we're proposing kind of this zero scape landscaping with good shrubs, good ground coverage, good trees that look good year round, very water conservative, you know, water, we want to be good stewards of Hyde Park water and make sure we don't use a lot of, you know, gallons in the timeframe of April fifteenth to October fifteenth. So that's why we kind of propose these, and I put some pictures up here, and if you can look at those and keep going through. And then, yeah, just good ground cover, so it'll look really good and use, and will be about ninety five percent less on our water usage than what the landscaping plan is currently on that. Right now, we're about seven hundred and twenty nine thousand gallons from October or April fifteenth to October fifteenth. And with what my water or my landscape engineer said, with the landscaping currently, it were about fourteen and a half million gallons from April fifteenth to October fifteenth.
I take it that's, that's for the duration, April through October, not per month?
Yeah, yeah, for that whole duration, yeah. Yep, so we're, like I said, we're about ninety five percent. Yep. So we're, like I said, we're about ninety five percent. Efficient compared to what the current plan is on our water usage. And we'll still, you know, turn over all the water shares. We'll still, we have, we'll still buy all the water shares we need to make it. Work for the culinary, everything like that. We've already turned over twenty water shares to Hyde Park City. And then we'll do the, we'll do the rest as needed. So you guys will still get that, that revenue there.
So what would you be doing for the open space for the residents where there was previously grass for play areas and things like that?
Yeah. So we'll be very tactical about where we're putting grass. We're still going to use grass. If you look at the very back of the packet, there's like a planting list. So we'll still have grass in there. We'll just be very tactical, like on the, by the clubhouse's areas, the, the. Some of the dog, like the dog park, we don't want rocks for a dog park or anything like that. That wouldn't, that'd be weird. But yeah, so very tactical on like the kids playground, the dog park, the clubhouse and pool area. And then the rest of the other outside spaces of there would be more of that zero scape.
And the, and the current plan. It's been approved landscape plan. Would include all that water to be culinary water. Or, or not, I mean, that's, that's what I'm trying to.
Yeah. So the hiccup here is in the mixed use zone, we require that any outdoor watering needs to be done with secondary water. There isn't pressurized irrigation available at the site. But historically, the land has been watered with irrigation water. And so the challenge went to the developers to figure out how to make that happen. As they stated at the beginning of the presentation, that's been, it's proven to be very difficult for them. And so what they're looking for is. Some sort of approval from the city council. Because in also in our ordinance, in the water dedication ordinance, it talks about how there's an option to set up secondary water. Dry pipe or irrigation system for future connection. And so that's what they're looking for. Approval from the city council is allowing them to set up a system. With accessibility or when accessibility is, oh wow, I can't talk tonight. It's been long. Set up a secondary water system. When it's available, but for now use culinary water to water their outdoor landscaping. That's what they're essentially asking for.
Because this would have been approved with the requirement. That all of that be watered with secondary water. That's, that's what it was.
Right. And the way that this ordinance is written is it goes back to this map right here. If you're within an irrigation boundary, you're required to use that water, as they just mentioned. They are within the boundary of the Hyde Park Canal, but secondary pressurized irrigation is not readily available. And getting it to their site would be quite a cost to the developer. The city staff's response was. It's still a requirement. And so they ask if they could come and sort of appeal that decision to the city council. So that's what they're doing.
Do, do we have others that could come forward and want the same thing?
Absolutely. Pretty much everybody up and down this corridor is probably going to be landed right behind them.
The situation we don't want.
Yeah, there's kind of an issue with the canal company. I don't want to speak ill of anyone because it's. Liability and legal problem more than anything else. The canal company is very concerned with the water in the canal. Once it leaves the canal, it's less of a. Priority for them. They leave it to whoever takes the water from the canal to manage their own offshoots. And so that's what's happened kind of all up and down this area is the city put in our ordinance that we want everyone to water with secondary water. Because we were under the impression that it's available, as most of the properties have been flood irrigated for decades. But when these developers have been reaching out to the canal company to get things figured out. They were quickly have realized that the irrigation is not as readily available as everybody thought it was. And so Bringhurst Village is the first to tread this ground, but you can bet that everyone else along the corridor is facing similar issues that. The water is not very easily accessible unless you want to flood irrigate.
They don't know how many shares they have out against the canal.
That's a separate issue.
So our code says you got to have the water and we approved this with the understanding. That there would, that there was water available. For Bringhurst to be able to do what they were going to, secondary water that they'd be able to get. So we require it. We thought it was there, we approved it with that understanding, and now we've learned that that is not the case.
Canal company is.
I mean, yeah, the developer could build a two thousand foot pipeline, but that's quite the cost. It's very expensive. And so that's what they're requesting tonight.
That'll have to be built anyway, somehow, some way to get the water there.
Right. And I'm not necessarily advocating for or against that. I'm just saying that's very cost prohibitive to them. And so they're here asking if.
So a pipe could go there with the cistern and pump and. We did that all the time when I grew up, but.
So when would the, and so we're saying another five years before the. Line or longer.
Right. It's a private company. I know right now they're getting, they're going after federal dollars. To actually get it piped and pressurized.
He said that exact same terms, the same words at the start of my current term.
Right. I'm, I'm on all the meetings for that and they, it's very slow rolling, mostly because the project involves. Like ten different canal companies, three or four different cities at this point, a handful of trails, an electric. Project at First Dam. I mean, it's become. This insane sized project. And so they're asking for like three or four hundred million dollars of grant money at this point. And so it's ballooned into quite the, the mess. So yeah, it would not surprise me in the least if we go another. If we get to the end of this next mayoral term for you and still they haven't made it any, or down the line.
Would water, watering with culinary water increase? It's going to increase the amount of water the project will need overall?
I mean, it will increase the amount of city water they need. In theory, it should be. The same, but we're more concerned with. The city water that goes there because that's what we have to account for with the state. That's what our water rights. Have to cover when we do our reporting every year. And so that's why we made our ordinances in such a way that if secondary is available, we want people to use it. It helps us. It helps the canal companies because they do similar reporting. And the more water that they can show they are using. Then the more shares they can keep alive and well within their company to keep providing water to people.
If, if the council sold their. Originally it was over fourteen million gallons of canal water to irrigate this. Through the summer and now it's being proposed just shy of eight hundred thousand. With the changes in the landscape. Of what they're wanting to do. I know. The Jinx project, I think they have some places where they have artificial turf. That they're putting in on theirs.
They're going to have some small spots where they do artificial turf.
Yeah.
And we, that's something we could look into as well. You know, we're not set stone on that. We just want to see if we can move forward this and we can, you know, come back to you and keep her by or whatever we need to do, but. We're not set stone on exactly, we can put turf in or whatnot, you know, we're open to that.
Is, is there any ditches that come off the canal that is close to this property?
So off of forty one hundred, there's a ditch, but it is not pressurized or anything. And, and from what I'm hearing is. Maybe four to five months out of the year, if that, it might have some water in it here and there, but. From what everyone's been telling me that it's not a reliable source of water. So, and one thing that my, my plant, my arc, my landscape engineer said. Ground, your groundwater is at six feet and a lot of these roots with these bigger trees and stuff, they're going to get down there pretty quick. So then it'll even. He thinks that after, you know, four or five years, it'll probably even require less, to be honest, is what he was saying.
I'm surprised you're saying that it's six feet.
Oh, it's, the groundwater is quite high down there.
Yeah, it, it, no, we, we did, we learned that the hard way. We did a high or a historic water level and they're not wrong. It is exactly six feet to the T. So, because we wanted to see if that was accurate and it was. So.
I'm absolutely in favor of what you're doing, no matter what kind of water you use, you know, so John, I appreciate the effort that's being made.
Thank you.
I guess my concern is that our code says something and we want something and we want to use secondary. What impact does this have on the city? So if we go culinary and then. Doesn't apply to you, you know, you don't care about, but my concern is, you know, future developments and any commercial that we'd want to go in there. And all the water requirements for however much space would, we'd want watered.
So we have a, we don't have a development agreement. We have a land agreement.
We did a right of way agreement because this is where future Wolfpack Way is going to go through. And so with the, the previous owners. Are friends from Kairos Real Estate. We did a right of way dedication agreement, but it's not something that affects the land use entitlement. And so this would be just something coming back to the land use authority for mixed use developments, which is the city council. That's why they're coming back here.
I, I would say that council, if you went with this, I definitely wouldn't leave it open ended. We'd. You'd want to come back and circle back in four or five years and find out where we're at because. I know J U Bs were working on the. Pipe in the canal. It's kind of a legacy project, but. I'm not in favor of any open ended and at future date, let's, everything sunsets. Let's. If you do something.
Then they clean a tough spot because if the canal company doesn't move forward with the project.
You're, you're at where you're at.
Their water off. I don't know if that's a wise move for us. Once people start purchasing and moving in and I don't know if that's a good option either. Because it really is dependent on a third party that's out of anybody's control and that could very well be put off for twenty years.
I don't know if this is relevant, but I do know that there's neighborhoods that to the east of us that are even closer to the pressurized pipeline. That are a hundred percent culinary water.
Yeah.
And the neighborhoods, yeah.
Right. Yes. But you put in how, I can't even remember the number of units that are going to be in here, you know, that many, you know, the high density. How many? Two hundred and five.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I.
I have the same struggle you have because our ordinance says one thing and what's the best? Resolution, we're trying to limit culinary water for landscaping. But our, if you can't get secondary water, we don't have anything that says if you can't get it, then what?
Right. Well, and I want to be clear, they can get it, but paying all the costs to run that is going to make this. So that their costs go way up, their units become way unaffordable, the whole price, the whole project goes way up in price. And that's not something I think the city wants either, is to have a bunch of townhomes get built and then they can't sell because the price is too high. But at least we got our secondary water line. So, you know, city staff, we struggle because. It's our job to make sure the rules are followed, right? That's what the city council hires us to do. But there is some. Consideration here about how the city is handling the secondary water in this area where we're making. We have rules that are doable, but maybe not feasible. And so we struggle a little bit with how. We as city staff are looking from direction from the city council as well with how you want to handle this one.
The bringing water rights, they're going to pay for all this culinary water. We have the culinary water to begin with, you know, maybe we do for them, but are we going to have it for the next one, the next one, the next one? And at some point in time that we say, sorry, you know, we got to change the code, no more building in town because we don't have water for it or, you know, that's.
Right.
And again, this is, this is not on you guys.
No, it's, it's a good question. I know right now the planning commission is struggling with an ordinance that would require that all developers bring water rights. No more having the fee in lieu of option. And they struggle with it because they feel like they, there was a public hearing, a lot of development. Community showed up to say that it's not very fair for them. But with the one thousand units on the way along Wolfpack Way, plus the about two hundred single family homes. On the way in the rest of town, we're burning through our water rights and on an alarming rate. We have enough to cover what's coming, but we will very shortly run out if we keep approving this many units at this rate. And so there is a consideration for the city council to think about. Or we have other projects that potentially are coming to the city in our industrial and commercial zones who also need water is. Our lawns and open spaces where we want our city water to be. Spent or do we want it spent on homes and businesses and things like that? So that's just for you to consider. I don't have an option or a recommendation for you ready for tonight. But that's just what we as city staff are also grappling with. We're trying to figure out how, how to make this work.
Well, and to piggyback on Marcus's point, if we say we were to just find secondary, run it. It would only take about four shares from the, all the lotted that we're going to buy. From the fee in lieu of on there. So it's not taking a lot out of your guys' bank, whether we do culinary or secondary. It's not really changing much there.
And, and how many water shares were dedicated over?
So they already dedicated twenty shares out of the Hyde Park Canal. We did have verification from the canal company that they were in good shares. They were worth the amount of water that they said they were. We also have an agreement with. The folks doing the Brinkhurst Village development, that if they get access to secondary water, we'll happily give them back at no additional cost. Any shares that they will need to run the secondary system. But it sounds like that may be hard to do.
We look every morning. Part of my morning routine.
So like I said, the city, as city staff, we don't necessarily have a recommendation for the city council with this decision other than. What we're doing is sticking with what the ordinance says, but we understand that that's creating quite a burden for this development. So I'm sorry, I don't have a better input for you.
Okay.
And we started the, the offsite work today, actually. So that's exciting. So that's, we're moving, we're making progress. So thank you guys. The guys, the city staff is awesome.
Good. It's going to get muddy in two days and you can't get in there.
Yeah, just in time, yeah, just in time for the snow, so.
I guess my worry is like just that we get enough water shares dedicated to us to cover whatever type of use they would require. Because in the future, we don't, we can't predict what's going to happen with that pipeline.
I, I tend to think that the twenty that they gave would be a good starting point that we try to go to the state to convert. Water shares in canal can be converted to water rights. That's a field we've never plowed. We know some that have. You know.
Oh, but we're getting ready to, believe you me.
Yeah.
You know, all, all water turns out to be green, it's not blue.
It's, it's right. And it's getting, yeah, scarce and expensive.
Yes.
Council of it, I don't know if you need more time to make a decision, but we could potentially have this on the agenda for the next meeting if you need more time to.
At this point. Is this something holding you up?
Hundred percent.
You know, I'm asking.
Yeah, it's, it's holding us up, yeah. We have one other item that we're just working through with Marcus on the stormwater drain system. Other than that, this is our only other issue that's not letting us dig the site.
So they're starting the, we split the project up into two pieces. They have some offsite improvements that have to do with bringing utilities to the site. That is underway. The actual development of the subdivision with the, the dwelling units in it, that is on pause. Until this gets figured out because it's part of the package. The city council approved the project. With some conditions that there were some, a few outstanding items that need to be cleaned up. One was stormwater, which is just about buttoned up. That one's pretty much done. And then the other one was the secondary irrigation plan.
So. Irrigation plan within. If, if the council likes this plan. Then it's the final determination is. How is it going to get watered? So if they approve the plan, but we're going to look. At the water, whether it's shares or culinary, does that move you forward? Because you're not putting in. Doing the external work down Wolfpack Way at this time, you're putting in. Just the utilities, right?
Yeah. So we're starting on forty one hundred right now and we're going to go east on forty one hundred up to Future Wolfpack Way. Which will be done with that in about three weeks and then we'll be ready to go on the whole site. We can go all the way up. Bringhurst and lay all that, get that done to the north of Bringhurst and then do everything in, in the middle.
Either way, you would be wise to put in sleeves uh, for roads or, you know, potential future connection, a sleeve at least that you can put a pipe through.
Yeah, yeah. When we're dry piping, we're we're stubbing in for secondary. So when that pressurize does, they can literally just switch it over and connect into our pipe and the whole site will have secondary water.
And and if you're doing that, running a pump at the canal, uh, by the time it gets there, how many PSI do you have?
Yeah, I honestly, I wouldn't, I wouldn't know. Yeah, I don't know.
Were the pump from the canal to to Brinkhurst, that would be.
Yeah, it wouldn't have a lot of pre PSI left probably because it would be a long ways to go.
So just to clarify, what we're, we're not asking to, or we, they're not asking to be relieved of the requirement. They're asking for the city to apply the option that is in the water dedication ordinance to have a dry piping system set up. And then in the future, they will use that when secondary is available. They're not saying they're never going to use secondary. Just saying they want to have that be what we apply to them instead of what's in the mixed use code, which says no, you have to use secondary water, period.
How do we make sure in the future that they do switch to the secondary? Is there something that we can?
That I don't know, but um, I do know that culinary water costs a lot more than secondary water. So I would think that it's gonna be within their best interest when it becomes available to make the switch because our water rates are only getting more and more uh.
You can, you can put a sunset on the date that they have to come back in and say in five years, where are we having pressurized water and we don't have it open ended because that doesn't motivate anyone.
Yeah, the ordinance doesn't go into that much detail. It just says when it's available. That's all of the ordinance says.
And who is ever going to say, hey, I wanna put a water line down through here and then these guys can connect to it? So.
That's why.
I have talked with Hyde Park Irrigation a little bit and they are starting, they're pretty motivated. I've talked with Mark Heard a lot. And he says that they're pretty motivated to get these projects done and and pressurize a lot of their area. So it seems like that Hyde Park Irrigation, I don't know about Cash High Line, they seem pretty motivated too, but Hyde Park Irrigation, they seem pretty pretty motivated to get it done in the next five or so years.
And they would choose to do that at the cost, whatever it's gonna cost them because they're gonna have to turn around and pass that cost, the same cost that you don't wanna spend now and pass on to future residents, they're gonna pass it on to whoever's owning those properties. And so it's somehow it's gonna get accounted for by somebody.
Right. I know that that is part of this big multi million, multi hundreds of millions of dollars project is the Hyde Park Canal will be piped all the way through the city along all the major roads to let connections be done. But again, nobody knows when that's going to happen. There could, I mean, if the city, if this is a big enough issue for the city, we may want to look for ways to partner with developers or with homeowners associations or something to install major connections or do something in conjunction with our annual roadwork that we do in certain neighborhoods. But then the city is kind of signing on for a little bit of long-term maintenance and babysitting of these things, which we don't really have the resources to do. So there's a lot of options, but there's just not a lot of easy ways for this to happen right now.
Can I go back to something you said before? Our mixed use ordinance says that you have to use secondary water for the external.
Any outdoor landscaping.
But before that, you said that somewhere else in our ordinance, it says that you can do either or. Is that correct?
Right.
When it, when, when it becomes our if available, right?
Yep. And this is the argument that we're, we kind of balance back and forth with our different legal to see what people's thoughts were. So from the city's perspective, the zoning ordinance is the one that's closest to them. And so that's the most important for us. But in our water dedication ordinance twelve dot one fifty, I think it's in section zero one zero. It does specifically say that one of the options we offer is to set up a dry piping system. Um, that's all ready to go. And then when the secondary is available, you can plug into that and use it. But there's no sunset on it. There's no time requirement. It just says the developer has to put in a dry system. And when the secondary is available, they will plug into it.
And are we concerned about dry systems going bad if they sit for fifteen, twenty years and they're never used?
Yeah.
Well, it's not like there's still water going through it. So what we need by dry, like stubbing it in on there and it'll still have like the water running through it. So it's getting.
So you're using it for your culinary water, it's gonna use it, not going to be dry.
And then what, well.
But eventually, they call it dry, but eventually it will hook up to.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, it's kind of a misnomer. That's what it's called in our code. But yeah, they would just use the city water. And then when the secondary is available, they would shut off this valve and connect it to this other pipe and off they go.
That makes sense. I was just thinking a long time ago, another subdivision did that and the pipes collapsed because nothing ever ran through it. But.
That could happen.
That's the, he's talking about the subdivision to his east. There's a lot of engineering issues with that.
So I don't, you know, we've been talking about this for a while. I think if the council's not ready to make a decision tonight, um, it's probably best to move this on. Um, I know there, this is holding up the project. But if it's gonna make the difference between deciding tonight or not, I mean, we can save over two more hours and deliberate.
Are the two things that are decided on, one being the change of the landscape.
Well, this is a proposal to save water.
Yeah.
Going from culinary to, you're going from secondary to culinary, that being the second.
And that was our advice. We said, you know, you might wanna propose a more conservative landscaping plan because that might help the city council feel like it's better to allow you to switch to culinary water. Cause the old plan did have a lot of grass. It was very water heavy plan as you saw.
When do we meet again?
Not, not till December, beginning of the.
That doesn't fit your.
No, I probably don't.
No, I'm, no.
You'd rather know before.
I think that.
Ask question and I'm ready to move on. So our water ordinance says either or if it's available. And then our mixed use says it has to be secondary. How about our commercial, how about our codes for any other zones for R two, R four, commercial, is it required to use secondary?
Not a lot of our other zoning has specific rules for secondary water. But we were very specific with the mixed use, knowing where it was going and knowing that there'd probably be a lot of public amenities or quasi-public amenities. And we wanted it to be to not be a limiting factor. And so we wanted to force people to use secondary water because then it wouldn't matter if they had a huge field of grass because they're using canal water to water it.
And I lied because I just thought of another question. So one more, I think it might be the last. When do we think that this landscaping will go in? What's the timeline of development? Because I know we've got several phases. And does all this landscaping for the first part of the phase need to be completed before they're allowed to do the next phase? And how many months, years?
So we're gonna be done with all the horizontal work probably by March of next year.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah. And then um, depending on, we're still working on if we're gonna do the vertical. And a couple of the people that are interested in doing the vertical, they would start digging basements shortly after that. And because way it works is because the, the foundations are so close to the asphalt, we'll dig the basements, get them all in and then we'll go in and asphalt it. So last fall after the, the foundations are in, so that way we're not cutting up a bunch of roads for no, no reason.
And then units would be done within.
You, we, we could have units on the market probably July.
Okay, pretty quick. And then we require the landscaping to go in.
That's uh.
Where I'm going with this is it might be another year or two before we've, any of this is ever going, goes in the ground.
Right. But your problem is it's part of the total package required to get your permits.
Yeah.
And so that's where they're hung up is we as city staff can't sign off on the landscaping plan because it's dependent on the secondary water. But they can't get secondary water. And so we can't sign off on the landscaping plan. So they're saying, let us use the options in twelve dot one fifty dot zero one zero. And we're saying that's a city council decision because we don't, we think that this is how it should be.
Well, and if the ordinance is, is implying where it's feasible and this is not feasible, then but maybe we can make an exception, but put a sunset clause in this where we circle back and then four years from now and and I wish there was some way that we could ensure that it will be switched to irrigation, but I don't interest.
Yeah, and that's something we could talk about, putting in, you know, the development agreement. And because they have the right of way agreement with Kairos, Kairos, the group that before that we kind of took over and then me and Marcus and everyone, we're working on a separate development agreement with us. So that could be something that we could put in that development agreement. Cause we wanna, we wanna create a beautiful community for the city, you know, we want people to love where they live and and, you know, it'll look really nice year round.
So you know how we, when people don't do a sidewalk that are required to, but they have put money into the sidewalk fund or we used to do that.
Well, we used to do that.
I mean, is that something like if we were to say, okay, if you put ten thousand dollars in a, an account for.
And the escrow tied up for that.
What, anyway, just because the reality is this is let's say that we approve this tonight. They build all these units, we have all these people down there. And then we, even if we go back to them in five years and say, okay, where are you at? I mean, we're not gonna shut them down. I mean, they got people living there. So I, I'm just saying, if we have some funds somewhere set aside for hooking up into this when things happen. I, I don't know.
It goes back to the principle we talked about with the core zone at the previous meeting. If the city does that, then we're making a promise to whoever puts into that escrow that the city is eventually gonna help fill in those gaps. So if that's a project you wanna take on and we wanna start budgeting for, great, but that's gotta come from the city council. We're, we as city staff aren't gonna um, put that into the plan unless that's something that you want to do specifically.
So I, I, I do like the description Dave was given on the by the time, you know, we, we could be a couple of years down the road before external irrigation is needed outside. And if you have a sunset or a requirement to come back in as part of a contractual agreement, there, there's that possibility to come back in and and maybe they're done building their portion, but they still can be held contractually liable for something.
So what would you like that to say? After five years, do, do we force them to build the two thousand foot pipeline or what? I'm just trying to figure out what, what they'll.
That also is awkward because that's cause they would load into their units had, if they had to do it now, if they have to do it after the fact, you're just, it's coming out of your pocket. So I don't.
Like, I'm, I'm just saying, if we give them a sunset, what happens after the sunset? That's all I wanna know. Cause in the end, if I'm writing an agreement, me and the city attorney gotta sit down and write this agreement.
Goes back to that feasibility, though, doesn't it?
Right. So what happens when it's been five years and it's still not feasible? Do we just keep kicking a hand down the road another five years and then in and then in twenty years when
It may or may not.
Most of us aren't here anymore and everybody's forgotten that it exists and it never happens. I
I would like to see that they dedicate enough water that it covers their entire project.
Yeah, I mean, they have to do that anyway.
Right, indoor, outdoor. So we know we have enough water and you put in the dry pipe system so that if in the event it comes to your property, you could connect.
And that shows good intention.
I feel like I feel like if we wanna check in on them in five years, great, but I don't, I don't know how you're full will then say anything more than that, you know.
I'm not trying to be contrary, I'm just saying, what do you want me to put in, in the agreement?
I feel like if they.
It's not teeth.
So.
Yeah, well, there's not really much teeth in the ordinance as is right now.
But there's zero escaping, which is a benefit.
Yes.
They're bringing us enough water, which is a benefit. They're not asking to pay the fee in lieu of bringing us the actual water, correct?
So one of the shares, the other shares we do need, we will be paying the fee in lieu of.
Cause I don't like.
How many shares do you, more?
It's about seventy two shares.
Seventy two.
Is that what you're saying?
No.
Include, that's, it's like.
It's like seventy two and that was for the indoor. If we're doing the outdoor with culinary, there's gonna be an additional, I don't know, maybe one or two.
Oh, yes.
We haven't done the math on that yet, but it might be. Well, it's, we look at the number of acre feet. So.
Yeah.
But that's a whole different, what do we need to do beyond? I'm ready to approve the landscaping options. I mean, this is a no brainer for me, like, yeah.
So I think.
Do that everywhere, but what more do we need to do now in order to allow this to go forward?
It's hard because I don't meet the ordinance. So I feel like we're granting a variance, right?
Well, we're not calling it a variance because variance is something else. But maybe it's something along the lines of the city council's acknowledging that we're gonna follow the rules as outlined in the water dedication ordinance instead of the zoning ordinance, something like that. Cause then we're still committing them to following an ordinance. We're just saying it's gonna be the other one. I mean, I don't like that either, but that lets them move forward.
And then we're gonna spend some time after this meeting figuring out the because what happens when everyone else wants to come and do the same thing in the mixed use zone, we're gonna be right back and having the same conversations.
Why I wanna have, they bring the water.
I don't like the.
Yeah. Every, every mixed use.
That's a different discussion.
They all have to bring the water or pay the fee anyway.
Yeah.
Right.
The concern that we have is making sure that we can get those secondary water connections. It helps us, it helps the canal company, it helps their future uh, residents. But they're, they're gonna bring the water regardless. It's just.
But, but the fee in lieu of makes a developer's problem, the city's problem.
Exactly.
I don't like that.
I don't like that either.
But that's.
Then Marcus, you have to call every morning to see if there's any shares.
So Dave asked a good question to move forward. If we're gonna acknowledge the feasibility of, or the viability of being able to, both of those of being able to have secondary water and having the dry pipes put in. What does the council, what's the recommendation that we could have with teeth? It's, it's, it's toothy as our code is now.
So my proposal earlier was like that money could go towards doing the connection. Maybe we just put some money in escrow and so when it happens and you, we release the money to the property owners.
Goes back to them.
Well, the canal company, their intent is to have all of the uh, users pay a fee for connection. A pressurize irrigation. And that's gonna help run those tributary lines.
Do you know what those fees look like?
No, they move slower than government. So where are we on? Is it to accept and move forward, Tony?
Just cause I'll throw another little wrench in it. If we
Thank you.
Do something like a escrow, they're only good for seven years and then we have to return the funds to the developer anyway. So if this doesn't happen within that amount of time, we're just returning the money to them. So I don't know.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Feel like they're trying, they're, they're trying to meet our ordinance, right? As best they can, even if water is a fee in lieu of water, they're bringing the water as it is required right now. Does their escape is favorable to the city? I don't, I don't like having.
Yeah.
But it hasn't made our ordinance, but I feel like they're trying.
And they can do. They are gonna pay for it. I mean, looking at thirty thousand gallons per week, this development, this HOA is still gonna be in our top twenty percent of water users. I mean, their bill's gonna be a few hundred bucks a month for using culinary water just on their landscaping. So the city's definitely gonna get a pound of flesh out of this. It's just the principle of the thing is this where the city wants to spend the water rights that we have. That's the bigger question that we as city staff have. If this.
Talking to, to rights, correct? Or how many acres? Talking to, to rights, correct, or how many acre feet?
Um, if I remember right, you guys had maybe four additional acre feet.
Yeah, cuz it was like two point three or something acres, and then they do, you guys do one, one point eight seven. And correct me if I'm wrong, anyway, acre uh, shares per acre foot of outdoor irrigation.
But you can think of it like, one house, um, one single-family house is. Half an acre foot, so that's eight houses that we won't be able to build. Because we're using it to water landscaping.
Which, there's a lot of people in town that would just not have those eight houses being built.
Right, there's also a lot of people who have kids looking for a place to live who maybe would appreciate those eight additional units. There's lots of ways to look at the problem, either, yeah, I'm just saying.
If we approve this going forward, is there a way that we can go and inspect to make sure that they put in those? Dry pipes?
Oh, yeah, I mean, like you said, they're not really gonna be dry, they'll, they'll still use the same pipe system for their um, culinary irrigation.
They'll use the same water systems.
And yeah.
Secondary comes, their capex.
We have public works employees checking in on all the developments as they get built.
And we wanna do everything right and build, build a good product for you guys, for sure.
It, it sounds to me like if we were ever to approve another mixed use, there's no reason to approve a commercial to mixed use. Change, there's no reason to approve any other development, mixed-use development. North of Center Street out there where there's no pressurized lines. So either we approve this. In accordance with our water use code and not our mixed-use code, or we're saying. We're never gonna approve another mixed-use development. Until there's a pressurized line out there because we're requiring someone to do the impossible. They, they cannot, well, we're not, they could put in the pipe, they could pay the. Tens, hundreds of thousands of dollars to put in their own pressurized secondary line. So, I guess it is feasible, but that certainly doesn't fit now our. Modern income housing cuz that gets passed on to every purchaser of a townhouse, so forth and so on, so that's. Counter to what we want to have happen.
This will just help us think of better questions in the future, for future developments that come in.
So I'm just gonna make a motion here, and then I guess people can say yea or nay, or we'll have more discussion. I move that we can, we approve the landscaping options for the Bringhurst subdivision. Uh, and the associated use of culinary water. In accordance with our water use code.
Twelve dot one fifty dot zero one zero?
Yes, that's the one.
You got it.
So long.
Okay, we got a motion from Dave.
I would second that.
And a second from Tiffany. Any more discussion, council? All the.
What do we, what do we do?
Go ahead.
What do we do when we have the next person come in and want the same exception in, in say four years?
We approve our, we approve our ordinance. And we decide if we are gonna let them.
Yeah, if the council votes to approve this motion, you've started a clock. Um, and so we have to either update our ordinances to reflect that we would be okay with everybody doing this. Um, or. We come up with another solution, cuz you can bet, I know three or four others who will be calling me tomorrow morning saying.
When this, this was. When I mentioned that the start of the council meeting of a list of codes, this was on that list.
But we, do we have to, and I'd have to look at our zoning map right now, how many? Properties have been um, rezoned, commercial, cuz most of them out along in that area were commercial at one point. I know some have been approved for mixed use. I mean, we could just deny any of those rezones from commercial to mixed use until. There's water out there for the same reason I, I would, I'll say on public record that. I'm not sure we did the right thing approving Bringhurst out there in the middle of no man's land, when we didn't have any utilities going through it, and it's causing. Now these, these issues for you and everybody else, and so. I would, based on that, I would almost say, sorry, I'm gonna vote no for rezoning from commercial to mixed use until we get it fixed. So, that's.
But we have a motion before us right now. And I'm not gonna say everything that Dave says on the, on the.
Tiffany's second.
But the motion that.
And I'm just kinda responding to Kirk's question there, saying that won't be four years, it may be four days, somebody's gonna be back in here. Yes, and I started off that I, that we approve the uh, updated landscaping options for Bringhurst subdivision and. And use it as a standard for future.
Okay. Any more discussion, council?
So you're doing two, you're doing the landscape first? Or the, oh, and the water, both?
I'm doing both, I, I don't think we can do, I mean, we can approve this.
It's a package.
But, but unless we allow the other, then this doesn't make any difference, so I included them both in the same motion.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with nay?
Nay.
Motion carries three, two. And you've got the documented. Ayes and nays on that, Tonya? Okay. Alright.
So hopefully that says we're concerned about this.
Yeah, we need to.
Knowing you can move forward, and I think that's great, but.
Yeah.
We're all kinda a little bit nervous about it, so.
Thank you guys for that, we appreciate it, and like I said, we'll work with you guys as best as we can for sure on it all, well, thank you.
Alright, thank you. The next item is to consider a flat amendment for the Corvus subdivision, and this is more along the lines of. Housekeeping, I guess, on the law up there.
Correct, um, so this issue was identified by our city planner, the, this was a case of a couple of neighbors. Uh, swapping a little bit of property or purchasing a little property from each other to try to make a, enough room for a new building. In their backyard, it's just an accessory building, just a little garage or shop. When the building permit got submitted, it was flagged cuz they were modifying the subdivision, and so this is really just a housekeeping item. Uh, the subdivision needs to be amended to include this additional land that's going to be in the subdivision.
So they're not adding a building lot to this.
Right, you're just adding in this whole triangle of property right here. Um, Mr. Reed Elder sold it to his neighbors, the Brinsleys, and so they just need to, we're just amending the subdivision. To include that little piece of land, so they can have enough room to build their garage slash.
Utility easement there somewhere too, right?
Uh, no, there's a, well, there may be a public utility easement, but that was being redone by the plat, the nearest. City utility easement, there's a water line that runs kind of way over here. Um, but that is not in the way of this building at all.
Okay.
So it's just the sliver of that parcel that.
Just that little baby triangle down there, adding it into the subdivision. And of course, we as city staff are one hundred percent supportive of this, it helps clean up. We have little problems like this all over town that we're identifying, where people just gave neighbors land. And it's created some messy property lines and some problems, and so we're trying to, as we get them now, we're trying to get them cleaned up. So we don't have messes in the future.
I move that we accept this.
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion from Kirk, second from Tiffany to accept a flat amendment for the Corvus subdivision. And that amendment not only is a corporation, but it also. Amends at the same time, um. Reed's parcel.
Well, he, he already sold the land.
Well, he sold it, but is it deed recorded that way?
Uh, yeah, I think so, so Reed's property is not in a subdivision.
Right, but. When we're. The legal description of Reed's property, does it still include this?
I don't think so.
Okay. Okay, I got a motion and a second, any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with nay? Okay, next item is uh, to discuss the improvements along Hyde Park City Center Street. Marcus, you wanna recap? What's been going on?
Yeah, so at our last meeting, we had a lot of um, people who were very concerned about their driveways and about the city's. Um. Well and pipeline project that's running up. Along Center Street, and they had lots of very colorful and fun descriptions of what they thought about it. Um, as an update for the city council, the project is reaching its final stages and. We decided to do something about those driveways, what we decided to do is we looked up APWA standards and city code. And found that driveway approaches should not be any greater than twenty percent, and so what we did is we went and. Um, revisited the contract, found some places where there were some extra quantities of. Road base, subbase, asphalt, things like that that weren't used, and we gather up enough money from those extra quantities. That we found enough money to fix eleven. Of the driveways that were uh, fifteen percent slope or greater. And so really, it was first of all to address the code issue, and then there were a couple more that um, just felt like that were a little. Unsteady, and so we found enough money in the contract to fix those, to. Update those driveways without changing the cost of the contract.
When you said we have the money to fix eleven, there isn't any more that are beyond the code. That, that have a greater uh, slope than the code allows, correct?
Correct, so the rest of them that aren't going to be fixed or worked on, um, do meet. The requirements of the APWA and the Hyde Park City standards, so we're not gonna touch them, and they'll be a little inconvenient, they'll be. You know, you don't wanna be hitting those going fifteen, twenty miles an hour, it'll probably hurt your car, but they'll definitely be compliant with standards.
Okay.
And have we let the citizens know?
I, I said that, I said that I would get back to Blaine, I kinda went out of commission for a little bit.
Well, and um, we didn't let them know because the contractor got right on it, and as far as we understand, they've already torn out all the ones that we are. Gonna be fixing, and they're.
Is that true?
Boring them out to.
Okay.
To repower them, and so we thought, I guess message has been received, but we're happy to send out additional messages to um, any of the other neighbors. Now, there was a question brought up at the meeting about why are we in this situation, why did this happen, how did this happen? Um. Well, I'll give you the long answer. When the city uh, came in with our safe routes to school funding to put, put in the sidewalk, there was. Some discussion with the neighborhood about where that sidewalk was going to go. Um, after lots of conversation with the neighbors, we decided that the sidewalk should go closer to where the road is now. And that is really what has led to all these problems, when you look at the standard right-of-way cross-section, that, that one that was brought to the meeting last time. That only works if we use the full right-of-way and put the sidewalk and everything where it's supposed to go. And so by the city choosing to put the sidewalk closer to the right-of-way and not having enough park strip to make a nice transition. That is what led to having it be very problematic. Uh, change. So it wasn't necessarily the contractor, it wasn't necessarily the engineers, it was past decisions that the city made that led us to this point.
If you recall, the sidewalk could have been. Much more into the city right-of-way goes in there.
So like, how much, like, three feet or four feet more, man?
Oh, eight?
Yeah, I can.
Twenty, in fact, you know, what, it, it's a significant amount, all you have to do is look right out here and about. You know, three fourths of, or ninety percent of the sidewalks in the residential core, and that's why we have. Asphalt stopping here and the sidewalks twenty feet over there, because that's the width of what that cross-section would look like is. Sidewalks would have gone, you know, halfway between the road and their front doors, cuz that's kinda where the right-of-way goes.
Are you pulling up the GIS?
Yeah, I just don't wanna get everybody seasick with. All, all the movements on the screen.
Cuz I've wondered the same, like, how come the road's here, and then it's like we've got all this off-street parking, and then we've got sidewalks. You know, in people's front yards, just cuz that ninety-nine foot wide cross-section, that's where the sidewalk would go.
So we, we knew that in front of Camille, we spoke about the. Free zone on her property, we knew that that was going to have to be taken out because of elevations.
Right, with the canal being, with the bridge being extended, yeah.
But, go ahead, go to the next block.
Well, first to illustrate.
Oh.
This kind of right in front of the city building is what it is supposed to look like according to the cross-section, you're supposed to have the sidewalk. Approximately one foot off the property line, big old park strip, and then get to your asphalt. And so when you follow the sidewalk up, you can see right here, um, at the corner of two hundred east and Center Street, we did a jog way out. Into the right-of-way, they try and preserve um, people's front yards, but I mean, it was also in the public right-of-way. So we tried to accommodate and get around and not take out people's landscaping and, and trees and everything. And so you can see there's a lot less land there to make a nice transition.
That's interesting, you can see it quite well there that in a lot of places when people are building their homes and they have to pour their concrete drive. That it goes to the property line, so as you walk through town, and I've wondered the same thing, why is it? Asphalt for X number of feet, and then all of a sudden you get this concrete driveway, well, that's because that's where the right-of-way and the property, their property line. Is, and you can see it in some of those very clearly.
I don't have a great exhibit of the fix, I'll try to explain what it is, so what they do is they take the sidewalk and cut it out. Um, in front of the driveway, and then they take it at a kind of a forty-five degree angle.
Almost like what's in front of Second East and. Center Street at Maureen's house.
Mm-hmm, yeah, it will.
But it's not that exaggerated.
Yeah, it kinda goes like this, and then we'll come out, and then it comes back, and then in the part that. Is wh- where the sidewalk was, there's an extended approach that's poured, and that's how the.
Yeah, it, you could show the one on seven hundred east that was done.
Oh, I don't know if the imagery showed that, I was pulling that up the other day. But I'll zoom in and see if we can see it, we ended up doing this with a house on our seven hundred east project, where we had a similar issue. Happen, let's see.
It may not be zoom enough, yeah, it's.
It's not showing me the right.
It's not current enough.
Yeah.
Doesn't have.
That's not current.
Yeah, doesn't have the sidewalks on there.
So it just takes a sidewalk and draws over so that you now, if it draws the width of the sidewalk. That gives you another four feet to get that more gradual slope.
So that's the heart of the issue, this is a problem that. The city created in trying to accommodate and be nice to neighbors, and now we get to. Reap the benefits of that. No good deeds, right?
I don't know if it's accommodate, but it's, it's versus running the sidewalk. Where it could have been. Not only would it add costs to the sidewalk. What we can do with park strip, it would double the cost of the asphalt that we need to put down. But there's. Lot of things that are wrong with Center Street and. We don't have the funds to fix everything, we're taking.
Right.
Bad situation and trying to make the best decision with what we have.
And so truly fixing this problem uh, would be making it just like the right-of-way cross-section, so tearing out the sidewalk. Putting it where it should be, one foot off the property line, taking out all of this. Landscaping that people have put in sprinkler lines, and then redoing the entire road. Um, at that point, we have a couple of poles that need to get moved, um, which is part of our agreement of Rock Mountain Power, it could be done, that's not. Impossible, um, but that's just more.
That's a good example on the corner of Forest East.
That's more, more impact than the city was trying to have with this project, and put it that way.
That little roundabout thing, yeah, taking the whole thing.
See, it's, it's never a fun realization when you're pointing the finger at somebody and it ends up pointing back at yourself, but yes, this was. Something that the city has to deal with because of decisions we made in the past.
Well, I still think it was the best decision out of a bad, out of all the bad decisions we can make.
Yes, we did eliminate anything that was non-compliant with codes and federal. Yes, we did eliminate anything that was noncompliant with codes and federal standards. So that was uh a huge win for us that we were able to do that without changing the cost or scope of our uh project with our contractor.
So the update is eleven the eleven or greater than fifteen percent are being redone. There'll be a little jog in the sidewalk into the the more into the city right of way, but the slope of the approach will be less. It will be less than fifteen percent.
And I'd just say, having walked that up on seven hundred East, the sidewalk does jog into it, but if you were just to look at it, it doesn't appear to jog into it because it's the driveway and there's still concrete the whole way. It's just that part of the s- flat sidewalk is now sloped a little bit for for them to have that approach. So at first I'm thinking this can look really wonky with the sidewalk goes on the way, but it doesn't because it blends into the driveway and the approach. Yeah, it's just all cement asphalt, so yeah.
So that is the update and that's what's going forward, Blaine.
So the other little announcement to go with that is we had our construction meeting with the contractor today and we're scheduling a final walkthrough for the project next Wednesday. So in theory, everything on that road should be done. The road should be opened back up and
asphalt in, I mean, we're about them with that.
Right, well, that's that was our thing that we told them. We said, how much time do you need for the sidewalks? And they gave us their estimation. And then one of their employees said, let's schedule the final walkthrough for next week. And we looked around and said, you sure? And they said, yep. And we said, okay, then that's what you can do. Great.
Does that include our well building?
Um there are a couple items. So this will be for substantial completion, which means about ninety-five percent of the project will be done. There are a few items that will not be done yet. There are some long lead items. When we bid the project out in February, if we were about a year out for a lot of major electrical equipment, so there are some things that will not be done. We're aware of that and we're working with the contractor to get those done as soon as we can.
Side of the well building, we're too specifically asking.
Yep, the building itself will be pretty much done. There's a couple of major electrical components that we'll need to install as soon as we get our hands on them. And then and then the connection into the tank itself will have to wait until the spring. We were watching our spring levels, our water levels and the consumption across the city. And we reached a point where the amount of water leaving the tank, um we're gonna have to turn on our wells pretty soon to compensate. And the only way that it works to is to shut down the tank completely because all of our wells pump into that tank and then redistribute into the city. And so if we're getting to the point where we're close to needing to turn on those wells, we can't risk taking that tank offline because if there was to be, if we took it offline right now, everyone would still have their water just like they would. That would be just fine. If we had some kind of fire or other emergency, we would have to turn all the houses off and move all the water there. And so as a precaution, we've told them just plan on doing the connection in the spring when our spring flows are really high and we're not gonna have that same problem.
Easier to reject that water flow in the spring than the hall. Well, thanks. I'm glad going through it with sunrise a couple, a few weeks ago as we did, we come up to a decent resolution and thought originally it was gonna be seven, but there's eleven. So there we go. Alright.
Can I make a motion?
Any other things from the council other than the me asking for a motion on number nine?
I've got a one comment.
What's that?
I've got a comment here. You mentioned earlier some changes to the code. And I know I, as I go through the code, I have handfuls of questions of where things I don't think make sense or just says you may or may not do this. And I kinda wonder what's the sense of having a code that says you may or may not do it? And I take those notes and I know that since we've had Mikel on board as our new planner and she's gone through that code and I see all kinds of, she's got it printed out and there's marks all over stuff. I just asked the city council when we get whatever we're gonna get here in the near future from from the staff that we take a good, close look at that because we spent a lot of time tonight. We and we've got some issues where one part of the code says this and the other part says that. And we experienced it two weeks ago with one of our minor subdivisions. And so that's on us to get that right and certainly on the on the planning commission to make some recommendations. But the staff's gonna, has done a lot of hard work and and I just wanna make sure that we do our due diligence when we see that to to look at it and examine it. We're not gonna be meeting in two weeks or in a month, so we ought to all have at least four to six hours that we ought to dedicate to that in the in the near future.
I agree one hundred percent, at least four to six hours worth of.
At least four to six, if not forty to sixty hours, so.
You're right. And my point is, is having that list is the the city council sets out an agenda says this is what we're looking to accomplishing codes. You know, so, alright.
We'll make the motion that we adjourn and go home.
A motion from Stephanie to adjourn. Kurt was right on it. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.